Welcome everyone, and this time please turn off your beepers if we have beepers, also your telephones. It's time I like for us to stand, and Troop 50 will, Boy Scout Troop from Montreat will come in and present colors, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and have our invocation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Mike Simmons could not be with us tonight, so let us all pray the Lord's Prayer together. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for that is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Please remain standing while they leave with colors. We do have a proclamation tonight honoring our veterans. I'll read it at this time. Whereas on Veterans Day, our nation comes together to honor our veterans and commemorate the legacy of profound service and sacrifice they have upheld in pursuit of a more perfect union. And whereas through their steadfast defense of America's ideals, our service members have ensured our country still stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know the blessings of freedom. And whereas the selflessness of our service members is unmatched, and they remind us that there are few things more fundamentally American than doing our utmost to make a difference in the lives of others. And whereas just as our veterans stood watch on freedom's frontier, so have they safeguarded the prosperity of our nation, in our neighborhoods, our businesses, and our homes. And whereas now as teachers, engineers, doctors, and parents, as well as local government employees, those patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serves as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. Now therefore I, Carl Bartlett, Mayor of the town of Black Mountain, do hereby proclaim that all citizens observe Veterans Day, November 11, 2013, by participating with patriotic ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. Signed, this 21st day of October, 2013. This time we'll have citizen comments. First sign up tonight is Tom Gill.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. I just want to give you a brief update of the Town Square project. If this past weekend, we had a wonderful event that was actually started by the Chamber back in the spring, when they bought a whole bunch of rocking chairs and had local businesses sponsor them, and local artists paint them. And we took all of those chairs up here onto the Town Square over the weekend, and on Saturday we had a sale and an auction, and all 62 of those were sold. We had an opportunity to enjoy a lot of great music with a band from the Ale House that plays down there on Wednesday nights, I think is the Newworth String Band, and just really a great time. A lot of people came out, a lot of bids were made, a lot of fun was had. Altogether we raised with chair and brick sales eighty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And with a matching grant from a family here in town, that amount went to sixteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars. So it was really a great day for the Town Square. The restrooms are nearly done. Boy, they're looking great, and I don't know exactly when that's going to happen, but we're getting very, very close to have those guys done. If you notice, the parking lots all been dug up, and right at a peak time of the year, it's a good time to do the parking lot here in Black Mountain. But it turns out that the company that's going to do the rock and the paving and things of that nature, that's all donated. And they shut off the furnace to make asphalt on October 28th, so we need to get it done. We strike while the iron is hot, and so that's what's happening over there now. Willy-Haley Garden is being cleared. If you look on the east or the west end of the lot, you'll see that the grass is gone right next to Montreat Road. Very, very soon we'll have some new plants going in there. The beautification committee is working on that project, so we're excited to see that come to pass. Right next to that, a cascading fountain is going to be built here very, very soon. It's going to start probably this week. Benecito is going to do that for us. And once that's done, then we're going to lay brick right in front of that. So a lot of interesting things are happening here in town on the Town Square. I think the sidewalks are going to be, some changes going on with those as well. So it's really coming together for us this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. We also thank Alderman Don Collins for being liaison with the Town Hall Committee, or Town Square Committee, and the work he has done. At this time, Phil Bessesi.
Thank you. Phil Bessesi, 15 Highview Drive. It takes sidewalks to build a village. People don't walk around and talk to each other, we are missing a lot of community. Second, when you do a cost-benefit analysis as if people mattered, you find sidewalks are a number-one community-building measure. Association of Energy Engineers say they're number-one in energy conservation on a cost-benefit analysis. Community people say they're number-one in crime prevention and keeping the town active. If you have a sidewalk in front of your house and your neighbors will walk in by, your chances of getting your house broken into are less, et cetera, et cetera. Two women going to the store together dragging carts and talking, that builds community. Two women driving separate cars to the supermarket, or worse than that, Walmart, that destroys community. So that's, I'm happy to hear that, check me if I'm wrong, the planning board has endorsed the concept of complete streets, and I want to thank them for that.
Thank you. We will have some public comment later on for those in there who are here to talk about the comprehensive plan. This time calling Larry Harris, Chairman of the ABC Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Town Board, we're here this evening to make a special presentation to the town of Black Mountain. As you all know, the ABC Store works under the ABC Commission in North Carolina, and after we come up with the net profits from the store, we're required by statute to make a distribution to the town for law enforcement purposes, and another distribution for alcohol education, which we do. After that, we make a business decision to determine how much money we need to retain in the store, and the rest we distribute to our governing authorities, the town of Black Mountain and Buncombe County. And Buncombe County gets 25% of that distribution, and it's discretionary each year, but it's budgeted each year. And the town of Black Mountain gets 75%. And that has been done since the store came into existence here in the town of Black Mountain in 1971. And there are board members, past board members sitting out in the group today, and perhaps past board members on the board of the Black Mountain ABC Board. And since that time, through the work of not only volunteer board members on the ABC Board in Black Mountain, but also our employees, Deborah Wooton is a board member, Terry Griffin is our store manager, and Bill Christie, who's our third board member, couldn't be with us this evening, but we wanted to come and remind the board and all those present that since 1971, the ABC Store in Black Mountain has distributed 2.2 million dollars or so to our governing authorities, town of Black Mountain and Buncombe County. And looking at our books and records with our auditors as of June 30, 2013, we determined that perhaps we had accumulated working capital over the years, just a little more in excess of what we needed, and that would have been a slow accumulation over the past years since 1971. But we determined that we could make, and voted and approved to do that at our August board meeting, a special distribution in the amount of $50,000. 75% of that goes to the town of Black Mountain, and Terry has a check for you, Matt, for that amount. But we do want to thank all prior boards, all prior employees, thank Terry for his work, Deborah for her service, and of course Bill for his as well, and we appreciate the opportunity to be of service.
Thank you. Thank you. If anyone else is presenting checks, we'll move you to the top of the line. Our good friend Julie White, Chairman of the Greenways.
Good evening. I'm here to give the report for this year. So, who clicks? Who changes the?
I did.
Oh, so I just pointed you?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can change. So this year was pretty much about outreach and connectivity. One of the first things that we did last year, this is still in 2012, so this kind of runs from October to October, was at the final farmer's market, we had set up our booth and we talked to people. And then we did it again this year, but we did it a little bit earlier in the year. So it was very interesting to talk to folks, because it always amazes me, but a lot of people are not aware of the Black Mountain Greenways and are very excited, so we actually gave away all the brochures that we brought that day, which was pretty exciting. Then last October, the Black Mountain Track Trail opened, and that is over in the Recreation Park. We had gotten a grant for that, so that's been fairly popular. It gets kids out into the parks. Then we, I'm sure y'all saw us in the Greenway, in the parade at Christmas time. And what we did was, carrying our green theme, we gave out pickles instead of candy, so we wanted to be healthy and green. And we'll be back with pickles. Then in the spring, we had our Greenway Challenge, and we raised about $1,000 or so for the Greenways. And then in May, we had Bike Walk the School Day, and that was along, the kids came from the Flat Creek Greenway, and they also came from the church, the Baptist Church, and walked on the sidewalk. We had hundreds of kids and parents for that spring event. And recently, I don't have a picture, because I'd already turned this in, but we had one in the fall, two in October, and we had again over 100 kids participating, walking from the Baptist Church and walking from the Greenways. So it's been very popular. Then we had our Second Cycle to Farm event this year. Town members Jen and Bill Strum and her husband David put this on. And this year, they raised over $3,000 for us. They totally sold out the events. People came from all over the state and many other states, and they did an economic impact study for this, and figured that it brought in about $85,000 to the community, because people were staying in the hotels. There were, a lot of people were staying at the Montavista where we had registration the night before, and they were eating and staying afterwards. And also, this particular ride goes to different farms in the areas, some in the Black Mountain area, some down in the Fairview area, and so cyclists would stop at the farms and make purchases. And we use local vendors to, for the after-party. Of course, we did have, you know, a lot of rain this year, and this is, and we did have some storm damage to our Greenways. This is actually the boardwalk that goes underneath I-40, and my understanding is they're getting ready to fix that, but they were trying to fix some of the drainage first and waiting for things to dry out a little. I will say that our paved trails lasted much better than the rock dust trails. I mean, they really are kind of designed, the water flows over them, there may be some mud and silt, but they held up pretty well. Then also this year, the commission voted to dedicate a portion of the Greenway Commission, Ash, voted to dedicate a portion of the Flat Creek Greenway to Emily Russell, and I believe that dedication is Friday, is that right?
It's going to be Friday at 4:00.
Okay, so y'all come on out, and it'll be that portion right behind the school. Then another thing we did in terms of connectivity, and we're still working on this, is we started to put signs out so that people would understand how to get from one place to another. This one is right off Blue Ridge Road, and it lets people like that are coming maybe from Blue Ridge Assembly know how to get into town from that point, so they can follow the garden greenway and to get on the Oaks Trail, and then they're right at the edge of town on little travel roads. These are some other examples of signs that we've put up, so that, those again are pointing to where the community garden are. And then these little carcinite signs, we, actually some Warren Wilson students placed those for us. So again, what we're trying to do is to let people know where these Greenways go. And then the Urban Forestry Commission also made a sign for us, or made a sign that is placed over in the rec park, and it just talks about the importance of trees, and they also labeled some trees along the greenway. We also did an application to New Belgium Brewing. They give monetary grants to the places in the states that they sell their beer. So what we asked for is some more directional signs, because we would like to get a better signage system on the greenway, more brochures, upstate data displays, and we also want to put stop signs on our Greenways, because right now, when you get to the end of a greenway, there's not signage for the users. And you know, this is particularly directed to our children, so that they get the idea that they actually need to stop and they need to be looking before they cross into the roads. And then we also asked for money for sharos that we could place on the road, which would show people how the Greenways connect, so how they could connect, say, the Oaks Trail over to the Flat Creek Greenway. And we'll hear about that in January. And even if we don't get that grant, we do have money in our budget, and we do plan to do the signs, because we feel it's very important, particularly for the stop signs and the safety signs for our kids. And then we actually created Greenway stickers. So Jack Williams, who you all know, and he was a great artist in town and is fortunately on our commission, designed these for us, and now we give these away when we have our display. We also updated our website, and we had several volunteer groups, once again, help us out. We had the Warren Wilson College, they put the Greenway signs, and as you can see, we have our stickers on the signs too. Montreat College helped us again, and they did some weeding and some other work along our Greenways. Asheville Green Works always is helpful to us in terms of giving us plantings and doing some cleanups. And recently, we had a Girl Scout troop approach us. They're not, they're not working with us yet, but we're getting ready to figure out how they can help, they want to be volunteering on our Greenways in the coming year. As far as training opportunities, we had Floodway Management Primer given to us by Jake McLean, and this was important, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that led to, but we really needed a better understanding of the whole Flat Creek flood plain and the whole, and how you figure out what you have to do in those areas. And we also attended the Carolina Thread Trail Forum, which is in December each year, so Jack Williams, Ann Lutz, myself, and Jill Edwards went, and I know the four of us and possibly other people will be going again. Teldemoresville is a very informative day. So after we talked, after Jake came and talked to us, and we realized that we needed to know more, you know, we're interested in going under the railroad, and we needed to know more than just what would happen there, and we needed to know more about the, how, what we wanted to do along that whole stream bed needed to be studied at one time. So a request for qualifications was put out for a hydrological and hydraulic modeling study for that Black Creek. Or is it the Swananoa at that point? I'm not sure. But anyway, and if you have any questions, ask Matt, because that's all I know. Then we have continued our local collaborations with the beautification committee, the Health Initiative, Parks and Recs, Safe Roots to School, the Planning Commission, and the Town Square Committee. So our goals for the coming year is to maintain and improve our current Greenways, improve our Greenway signage. We would like to update our display. The display that we have is nice, but we really need to improve it, we feel. Work with the town on the Riverwalk Greenway, and that is the one that goes underneath the railway, and there's just a lot of work to be done on that, and to continue greenway And then we also will be continuing some of our outreach and fundraising things. The Greenway Challenge will happen again, Cycle to Farm will happen again, and we want to speak to groups, have our display events, we will be doing the Christmas Parade again, so look for us. We're going to be really asking for more participants to join us on their bikes or walking, and we're continuing to pursue grant opportunities. And I think that's it. Any questions, comments? It's been a fun year, and I'm really looking forward to another fun year.
We really thank you for your leadership and the work of all your members too, Julie. Great, great job.
Thank you.
Give her a hand.
I was just going to point out that Julie had mentioned the RFQ for the hydraulic and hydrological study, that those proposals are due back by the end of the month, by the end of October, and so we'll be coming back to you after that with, when we kind of have a proposal for that and the design work that would go in that phase that Julie had talked about.
We now have Dana Stone with the Recreation Program Supervisor with the Recreation Department report.
All right. Thank you. This is our six-month report. It's going to take place sometime from March of this year up until now. So the first slide will be highlighting athletics. So a lot of the information you could read on your own, but also to make note the swim league. We had 25 participants in our internal league this year, but we're looking to expand that to an area league possibly next year, increasing that number up to 40 participants. We're hoping to collaborate with McDowell County and some of the other counties. Spring softball, we had 95 participants. Fall softball, 60. You guys can read this yourselves. But Smart Start Soccer, 18 participants. We collaborated with Montreat Men and Women's Soccer, so we appreciate them. Their soccer camp, we had 12 participants with Ray Nightingale. Ray, we appreciate you so much. Tennis camp, we had 16 participants. Of course, Ms. Eubanks and the Black Mountain Tennis Association helping us with those camp, with that camp rather, to help them wellness. Spring Employee Wellness Campaign. Jill had all the participants that wanted to participate, we all got to wear pedometers. And so every step that we took was tracked, and come to find out, we took over 12,000 action steps, or over 1 million, 1.6 million steps, and then action minutes were also measured. Walk to School Day, that just happened recently. Julie talked about that on October 9th, and I was able to help with that. The police department was tremendous with that, we appreciate that a lot. But it was a lot of fun to watch the kids with their parents walking to school, riding their bikes to school, and you know, kind of took you back to the day when that happened a lot more often. Health Initiative, there was a grant from the Ernie DeWitt Foundation that supports a breakfast project. It involves healthcare providers in Black Mountain to work together to provide information and support for their patients. And then Julie talked about the Cycle to Farm, which Black Mountain Recreation Park was directly involved with that as well. Community Garden, Jill Edwards is in charge of this event. We have 27 students in our current garden club. These kids, they meet once a week for the entire school year. We have a young lady, her name is Autumn Martin, she's a student at Warren Wilson College, and she's actually overseeing that garden club at the Black Mountain Elementary School. Jill also received a grant for a mushroom forest, which has been pretty unique, and you know, with all the rain given, it's not been too hard to do that, I wouldn't think, this year. Empty Bowls, we, $1,600 was raised for an outdoor kitchen, and then of course the garden plots for the Dr. John Wilson Garden. Senior Activities, our Tuesday hiking group is just off the charts. We turn folks away, or we try to have them carpool and follow us in other cars. So if you're interested in a day-long activity, it's a $5 fee that we typically charge, and it's grown quite a bit. We have five new programs that we've created at Lakeview Center. The nutrition site, Treve has done an excellent job there with an average of 22 participants each day. Each month, we do a Van Clan trip with senior citizens. The upcoming couple of trips that are of interest, we're going to do the Virginia Creeper Bicycle Trail, and then in November, we're going to go to Swamp Rabbit. So that's another bicycle trail. So all right, I just want to plug, but our seniors are so active in this community, it's amazing, and hats off to them. Special Events, Park Rhythms, over 400 attendants per show, and if you can believe this, we did not have one rain out nor rain delay, which I think is pretty amazing. I've never watched the Weather Channel so much in my life. The Atlanta Braves baseball trip, we had a great time with that, we took 10 participants down to that. And then the Summer Adventure Camp, what an amazing job that Stephanie and Beth do with that program. It was almost full, every one of the camps the entire summer, and they even managed to make a little profit. Aquatics, you know, you got to remember the type of summer that we had. It was not swimming pool friendly. But that being said, it definitely impacted our bottom line. Attendance, you can see the comparison of 13 to last year, we were down, rentals were down, days of operation, even though we were open 78 days, some of those days it was only partially open. That being said, aquatic financials, concession were up. We made a slight increase there. Total expenses, well, revenue was down, but the expenditures were also down because of an overhaul of the plumbing system in the bathhouse. So we appreciate, Jamie, your help with that. So again, total revenue, obviously it was down, but I think it's pretty clear why. Upcoming events, we have indoor soccer signups that are currently going on, and you can do that online. Youth basketball signups, November 2nd will be a bicycle rodeo at the First Baptist Church Parking Lot. That'll go on from 11 until 2 o'clock. The Mini Monster Fest, that's this coming Saturday, so I'll do a plug for that. It's going to be at Gray Eagle Arena. We're going to show, we're working with Montreat College, we'll have an outdoor theater where we're going to show Monsters, Inc. We're really gearing this towards 10-year-old and younger, so nothing scary. We'll have a hayride. We're going to do pumpkin painting where the kids can take their pumpkin home with them, so it should be a lot of fun. That'll be at 5 o'clock this Saturday. Circle of Lights, December 7th, immediately following the Christmas Parade. Disc Golf Tournament is November 2nd. Disc Golf Tournament is November 2nd. And then the Valentine 5K will be on February 8th, where we are able to highlight three of our greenways as well. We try to make sure that we, that's, that was one of our goals when we moved the location from Rec Park over, back over to Lake Tomahawk. Then just a little plug for Carver Community Center. Currently, they are renting to the Swanano Valley Montessori School, where there's 50 kids every day using that facility. So that's, it's a win-win. And then again, Saving Grace Academy is also renting. So, do y'all have any questions? I get the lucky job. I get to promote this kind of stuff, you know? It's not like Jamie with strings.
When Governor McCrory was here, he was talking to me about what he felt we had a great quality of life here. My response to him about that was, I feel like here we've tried to build a quality of place. You can build a quality of life anywhere, but the quality of place is totally different. I think with programs that you guys have implemented, Julie, and other commissions and committees, we're truly building a quality of place. Wonderful place to live.
It's a fabulous place, and the collaboration of businesses and universities and colleges, it's, it's a, it's the most given community I, I can say that I've ever had the privilege to work for, for sure.
It's a beautiful thing.
Thank you. Y'all doing a great job. And now the guy that fills up all the potholes. Jamie Matthews, Director of our Public Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is our biannual report from March to August, and it was probably one of the busiest six months that, that I've encountered since being an employee with the town of Black Mountain. A lot due to activities, a lot due to the floods. That being said, our work orders completed for streets and parks was 1,386. Our water, we had 1,515 with 40 leaks. Our water cutoff connections was 461. Sanitation was 54 with a total of 2955. Our water system, our water usage was 74,515,000 gallons, 404,000 gallons a day. Our water loss was 36% at 234,000 gallons a day. That's a little high compared to the last six months, but we've had an increase in some water leaks, which is pretty normal due to season change from winter to spring, spring to fall. Also, we've done our hydrate testing for the year, which takes a lot of water also. And then billing cycle has a lot to do with it also. Our water system projects, Carolina Heights Project, which Mark White and Jesse had worked a lot on. It, it has been implemented. Everything's in, just for maybe a hydrate. Should be completed by about November the 2nd, where then they will do some adjusting on some pressure reducers and some valves. And it'd, it'd be a slow process, because you don't want to go in and adjust it all at once, so it'd be a slow increase. And we should see some pressure start going up. Our hydrate testing was completed. Only thing we have to do is go back and repaint hydrates, bring their, bring their colors back to code. Law's getting them entered in the system as we speak. On our GIS GPS mapping, they start approximately 3,300 meters, we approximately got 1,800 of them completed. On our water capacity assessment, we replaced two pumps in the watershed, well 18, well four. Jesse is actually putting together the model for that right now to see what kind of increases we had. I know, speaking to him, there is a definite gain in water production. So that being said, it might be something we look into replacing some more pumps and getting more water volume, water capacity. Replacement of water taps on State Street, that's going to be a fall project this fall. And we're going to try to replace anywhere from 30 to 40 taps, get rid of some of the lead and replace it with some more modern material before the state comes through and actually paves State Street. We replaced 200-foot of water line on Cordele Court that was not up to state standards, bring it up to state standards, switch them houses over on the it. Got that completed. On our infrastructure projects, we're still implementing storm drain repairs and replacement, where we have replaced several, several storm drains and culverts. Still doing stormwater ditching and culvert replacements. We had several tree removals due to floods and, and just trees that needed to be removed due to danger or safety issues. Tremendous mowing of rideaways. I will say this, we, we had an open position, a full-time position, that we fill with two best staffing peoples, which gave me an extra, extra man for this year. And those two guys mowed every day, five days a week, and could barely keep up due to the rain we had. And that, they've done a tremendous job. Needless to say, their grass is probably waist-high at home, because they're sick of looking at it. But they've done a good job, and they mowed five days a week, and, and we're still doing some mowing as we speak, so. Asphalt patching and curbing, we put out 48 tons of asphalt this year, which is really down what we normally put out. So that means we're staying ahead of it and not doing as many street cuts. So that's a good thing. Street sign maintenance is your normal replacement, bringing signs up to state code and reflectivity, replacing them as they get gone or damaged. On our parks maintenance, there's a lot of stuff to list here. I just sort of hit the, the highlights of it, but we replaced the fountain in the lake. We moved several trees at the playground, kept everything trimmed and mowed. And we also dredged the intake at the lake, which was very, very needed. And we've been checking on it every four months, July, November, and March, and we will be maintaining that as needed. We're in good shape right now due to the, the heavy rains lightening up. But we've done maintenance at the tennis courts. We put in new dishwashers, countertops, replaced floor tiles at Lakeview, re-sanded mulched playgrounds. And like Deanna said, talking about pool maintenance, I know the past couple of years, we've sort of been down on to the wire getting the pool inspected and getting it going. We've done it, but there's a lot of old water lines and sweated fittings, copper fittings. So this year, we budgeted, and we're having the whole pool replumbed with pecks. So if it ever freezes, it, it should not do any damage, and we should be just good to go when that comes around again. Rec Park, we repaired the ball fields and walking trails. I know we've done this twice, and it was due to floods. And we had massive amounts of water that completely took the trails out, took the ball fields out. And the guys redone them fields twice, and they, and they rebuilt them trails twice. And it was a lot of work. I commend them for a great job on that, and, and I'd like to thank Little League, because they, they gave some money back in repairing them fields and buying material, and, and they made a big effort to help us get it back to where it needed to be. The bridge under I-40 that Julie White was talking about, we actually cleaned out from under that bridge and hauled out 110 loads of sealed, dump truck loads. And so that being said, we'll try to get started on the bridge this week and have it open for the race on November 2nd. Our greenways, the walking path, we've, we've redone the walking path to Dog Park. We mulched around fruit trees. We put up a new street light on the Flat Creek Greenway in some dark areas. I know that's been some requests from people just for safety, and that, that's been done. Carver Center, we installed new flooring in auditorium. We, in the classrooms, we, we painted outside and inside the building. We insulated the boiler pipes, replaced roof vents, repaired leaks in the roof, replaced broken windows, re-sanded and installed new nets at the volleyball court. And as far as the, as maintenance goes, I'm missing several, several things. And there's just a lot to be done, and, and the guys have done really good with it. On administrative projects, we had our asphalt overlays this year. JLS Company won the contract. They've done a really good job. We repaved Shoemate Road, Westview Avenue, Ninth Street, and Tenth Street, and restripped. That being said, I'd like to thank the homeowners on Shoemate and Westview Avenue. I went to them personally, door-to-door. They paid for the pipe, replaced the culverts under the driveways. We installed them. So them roads, when they were complete, was completely new roads, from the drainage to the culverts to the roads being paved. So we should be in good shape there, and I'd like to thank them and join in efforts with us to, to get rid of some of the drainage problems in this town. Sidewalk replacement and repair, we're actually into that right now. Dale, Dale Robson from Candle Concrete on the contract to that. And we've already got started, and we're going to be doing State Street. We're going to re-level the bricks on State Street and Cherry Street, Laurel Circle, South Laurel Circle. And we've got the looking in the town square, you know, repaving that parking lot down there, and that sidewalk being in such bad shape, we thought it'd be a good time to put a new sidewalk in there. So if you see that sidewalk coming up right there in the area of that parking lot, that's wine. So we want to get that replaced, and then that really needs to be done. That way you could butt the asphalt up to it, and it wouldn't create problems construction-wise. Montreat Sidewalk, it is completed. Actually done a walkthrough and a punch list on it. That being said, the sidewalk is completed. They are installing a 70-foot privacy fence today at Teresa Way, and then that project is done. And it is completed. They've done a good job. It looks really good. Our next phase, if it, if it stays the way it's planned, we'll take it to East Street, which, which is a good distance up Montreat Road. So we look forward to that. The Safe Routes to School project, it's almost completed also. They actually started asphaltin' today. It goes up to Atkins Drive. We'll have to do a punch list on it and do a walkthrough, make sure everything's good. They've only got a few things to do, but it looks really good, and it should be done sometime within the next couple of weeks. So, and I'd like to thank Jill Edwards on that one. And actually, on these projects, there's several people to thank. Anna, you take Jesse, you take the Parks and Rec people, you take, it's, it's a team effort, and there's a lot more people involved. It ain't just me. There's, it's, it's the whole town. Somebody plays a part in it somewhere. So I'd like to thank everybody that helped out on all these projects. The Two Dams Emergency Action Plan with Army Corps, the action plan has been completed. We have received that. The part of what kind of construction we're going to have to do, we don't really know yet. I know Matt has talked to an engineer that has to be present during this, during this process. But with that being said, some of the stuff that they have told us will have to happen, like trees coming off the dam. I did start the process of, of getting some quotes on that, and I think we'll be in really, really good shape. So I've worked out a deal on that, and, and so that's going to be good. That's, we'll be able to save money and come in below budget what we have right now. So, and I know this year, we implemented 811, which is a locating service to locate underground utilities, which has really stopped my department from having to come in at 12 at night, 2:00 in the morning, from contractors busting water lines and stuff like that. And since, and, and it was really shocking to me to know how many, how much stuff was going on in this town unknown. That being said, since July, we've done 202 locates. So that's turned out to be a really good service. I know a couple of weeks ago, I met with FEMA over some flood stuff. That's actually not on this project report. I've added it on here. But that being said, they are giving funds to the floods that happened only in the month of July. And you had to have receipts or documentation that it was in July. That being said, most of our damage was in February and May, but we was able to still come up with over $50,000 and damages, which we hope to receive. I filled out the application for that. The process has started. We're supposed to meet with them on Wednesday, and we'll know about, more about the process and how that's going to go. Also, another thing that I added on there is, if you remember my last report, I mentioned that Asheville was going to give us 4,700 gallons of magnesium chloride. They voted on it, and we got it. And I would like to thank them. That was probably $25,000 worth of stuff that we received for free. With that being said, it is designed to be put out at a certain temperature, which will work really good in our high country people that live in Timber Park, places like that, Allen Mountain. If it freezes and the roads are bad, we spray that on there, it turns to water within an hour. So it would be a lot safer getting in, a lot safer getting out. When this stuff is used up, Asheville has also went to a brine solution, which is basically saltwater, but it's a pretreatment. They are spending approximately $70,000 to make their own. So we have an interlocal agreement to get salt and sand from them now. I actually spoke with the Deputy Public Works Director, David Foster, and when we use this material up, they're willing to let us purchase that saltwater solution as a pretreatment to fill the tank back up. So time we wired it, put it all together, we got less than what the tank cost for all this stuff. So I'd, I'd really like to thank them for that. That was a nice gesture, and we really appreciate it. And if we use it the way it's supposed to, it could last us several years before we ever need to buy the brine solution. We also, something else we implemented about a week ago is biodiesel. We're going to do a pilot on it. Blue Ridge Biofuels come out, donated us a tank. We had it hooked up. We're going to, it's a 250-gallon tank. I'm going to pick out a couple of vehicles or equipment, run a pilot test on it. There's not a whole lot of difference in price, but with that being said, we're, we're trying to support the efforts to make a cleaner environment, and that's, and that, and it does do that. So I support that 100%. So we'll see how that goes. The next slide, did you back up one more? That's just some pictures from the, the floods that I just added in. That's, of course, y'all recognize what it is. But the one down at the bottom with all the rocks, that's actually, behind the ball fields, that's a part of the greenway that them guys had to build back. And, and that's not complete. That's just a little section. The one beside that is the bridge that Julie White was talking about, the walkway. That's the handrail sticking up. And them tunnels is actually what we took the 110 loads of sealed out of. The two top pictures is Lake Tomahawk, and I can honestly say that I had to come out several mornings late at night and open the spillway. If not, Deanna would have probably been doing her report in a boat. So, but anyway, it worked out. And with that being said, that, I just wanted to give you an idea of what we've been up against. But once again, I'd like to say, it ain't, it ain't just our department. It's every department in this town that plays a role, and everybody that played a role, I'd just like to thank you. And thank the guys that work for me. They've done a heck of a job, and I appreciate everyone of them. So with that being said, is any questions?
Thank you, Jamie. Great job. Good stuff.
Yes, sir. Tonight, you've got the adoption of minutes from your September 3rd meeting, your September 5th Agenda Workshop, and your September 9th meeting. You've got a budget amendment to recognize revenues from insurance settlements for the accident with the, the fire truck on 40, and also an accident with the, with the suburban in the Fire Department. So, but insurance covers, covers all of those costs for those. You've got a budget amendment to upgrade the drug seizure vehicle. That vehicle was the 2001 Yukon. It's, we've upgraded it to the, to a 2010 Ford Taurus. We can use drug seizure, or drug forfeiture money for that. The, the cost of that's $12,850. It will have no impact on the, the taxpayer, though. That's, that's money in a reserve fund set aside from drug forfeiture money. You've got a budget amendment to make repairs to the golf course drainage. I know that Alderman Sobel had asked for some specifics of where that drainage was. I hope that everybody got a copy of the drawings that Robbie Henderson had done of the drainage. It's, it's primarily Hole 1 and Hole 17. It's, it's, it's every hole except for two holes that are having some work done on them, but primary, those are the, those are the major problems that, that it addresses. And what, what this will do is transfer $45,000 from the general fund. We'll, we will pay the vendors out of that money, and then Robbie Henderson and his crew will do the work. And then you have an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission. Barbara Wall has applied. She owns property at, what is she in? 204 Broadway? One, maybe 104 Broad, 104, 104 Broadway. So she, because she's a property owner in the Historic and Conservation District, she qualifies for the Historic Preservation Commission. You also have the acceptance of Mandolin Drive, which is the road in the Nine South Townhome subdivision. It's been completed, surfaced, inspected by, by the Public Service Department and the Fire Department, and should be accepted for public maintenance to be put on our Powellville map and maintained from us from this point forward. And then you also have an authorization- And then you also have an authorization for the town attorney to develop an easement agreement with the City of Asheville to install two water meters on town property at the Carver Center. It's away from the actual center, it's further down, but it's to allow two homeowners that are down the hill there to get off of wells and then they would get onto Asheville water. The other homes down there are already on Asheville water, they're not close enough to Black Mountain water to make it feasible to get onto our system, so this would be an easement to allow them to put the meters on our property. And that's what you have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a consent motion to approve consent items A through G as presented?
Aye, seven.
Any discussion? If you have no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries five a. We won't have any citizen comments in regard to this next session of new business because I'm opening it up to public comment, once it's presented and it's discussed by the board if they wanna make comments and once it's presented. So at this time, Matt, do you wanna?
Well, I'll recognize Brian Taylor, who's done the work on the comprehensive plan to come and do a brief presentation and a summary of the process that we've been through, the findings for the plan that was approved by the planning board and just an overview of what's before you tonight.
Thanks, Matt. This is a planning process started by the planning board back in May two thousand and twelve, completed with the help of town staff and Land and Sky Regional Council for the past sixteen months. And I'm gonna go over some highlights from the plan, a little bit about the planning process and answer any questions you might have. First, I'm gonna just go over briefly, what is a comprehensive plan? This is the town's long-term planning document. It articulates the community's vision for the future, it evaluates community conditions and trends and it uses that information to develop some strategies that will guide future development. So how will this be used and by who? First and foremost, it's a roadmap of the town, to guide decisions on where and how the town is gonna grow over time. It does that by informing investments such as those in the capital improvement plan, it informs policies, incentives and regulations in the land use code, and it also informs approvals and conditions attached to development proposals. And it's also a preview of town actions for residents, developers and other local stakeholders, helps them get a better idea of what the town would support. Your original comprehensive plan was updated in two thousand and four, it was part of an extensive public input process, it was used to develop the plan and the community vision on which it was based. There was notable progress since then on sidewalks, greenways, the pedestrian plan, open space preservation, skate park in Town Hall. However, it's recommended that most comprehensive plans are updated every five years. You're about to come up on your ten-year mark, so it was definitely a need of an update. There's been a recession, new development, new plans, et cetera, and this leads to changing issues, opportunities and local priorities and your plan needs to be recalibrated to address these. And so the plan update has revised the steps taken to realize the community vision that you created in two thousand and four. So what is this community vision? It's a shared vision that was developed by residents during the two thousand and four planning process that describes ideal end conditions that will be realized when the plan is fully implemented. So they're aspirational statements, I have one there below for community planning as an example. And all the actions in the plan support one or more of these vision statements. So they're all based on robust public input process from two thousand and four. In addition, there was a lot of public input that was part of the plan update process. Definitely the largest piece of this public input was a public input survey. It was online and print and we sent out over three thousand seven hundred survey postcards to every single address in Black Mountain. And we also received over four hundred and twenty responses, that's not small. And we asked them about actions in the plan that they want to support, whether they're new or existing, we also asked them about goals and vision statements. And I've highlighted some of the popular themes there, greenways, sidewalks, the water plan, mixed-use housing options, whether that be affordable or for seniors, parks and recreation facilities, always popular, local job opportunities was a very high priority goal, as was stormwater, and that showed up a lot in some of the open-ended comments. Another form of public input was the planning board meetings between May two thousand and twelve and September two thousand and thirteen. Most of the planning process for the update took place during these meetings, so there were many occasions for residents to provide their input on planning priorities during these meetings. There was also meetings with civic groups such as the Rotary Club and most recently, there was public comments on the draft comprehensive plan update and that's provided in the appendix A that you received two or three weeks ago. Appendix also includes the results of the public input survey. The other sources of input on the plan were existing recommendations from your adopted town plans, such as the pedestrian plan. You also have the community conditions and trends analysis that was performed early in the year. This gives information on things like population growth, changing demographics. One of the important things we found out about that was that the town is continuing to age and is significantly older than the state, but also Bunkham County and actions in the plan need to reflect that. The plan update was also based on recommendations and input from town departments, boards and commissions. All these sources of input were used to update the issues and opportunities divided by policy areas you see in the second box there. And the planning board also used input from these sources to decide on the new and existing action items that are going to address these issues. Once we had a list of proposed action items, they were prioritized by each planning board member with a score between zero and five and they were asked to base their decisions in their judgment whether an action supported the community's vision, based on local priorities expressed in public input and also based on advice from department heads. And now I'm just going to go over a few of the highlights of the plan. I'm gonna highlight some of the highest priority action items in the plan, those are in bold print there. And I'm gonna cover some of the things that have been continued from the old plan and some of the things that are new. The updated plan addresses land use planning, of which there was actually very little in your last plan. And one of the new highest priority action items is the development of a future land use map that's going to identify preferred types of growth and preservation for all areas of town. Your vision statements gave a rough idea of what types of development that residents prefer, but no indication as to where. And the future land use map is something that's in most comprehensive plans, it was beyond the scope of this update process and it should be adopted as an amendment to the comprehensive plan update. The future land use map is also important because there are other highest priority action items that depend on it. Future land use map planning process will be used to identify areas for infill development, for example, and also for future mixed-use development. These were also elements in some of your vision statements from two thousand and four that were not addressed in your two thousand and four plan by any action items. Moving on, environment and natural resources there, there was a new action item, the highest priority action item in that chapter was the construction of downtown stormwater BNP's to filter out pollutants. Stormwater BNP is a best management practice, example you'll find right outside this building, Rain Garden, filters stormwater pollutants out. And your stormwater master plan that you adopted in two thousand and nine recommends integrating these BNP's into the downtown streetscape and there is funding from NCDN or two to support this action through three-nineteen grant funding to clean up impaired waterways. And this one in Oahu is classified as impaired waterway, mainly to stormwater runoff. Next slide. The transportation chapter included a lot of action items that have been continued from the two thousand and four plan and updated accordingly. A lot of these are gonna look pretty familiar. Completion of the Montrier Road sidewalk and other priority sidewalk projects that have been identified in the pedestrian transportation plan. Expansion of the greenway network has also been continued as an highest priority action item and we received input from the Greenways Commission on what the priority trails were. You'll see Riverwalk Phase Two, that's definitely the highest, followed by Flat Creek Phase Two, the Owens Spur and Tomahawk Spur. And I'll point some of those out on the map on the next page in just a moment. Another continued action item was the I forty interchange at Blue Ridge Road. This was continued as a strategy expected to address traffic congestion downtown, especially truck traffic, which we've heard a lot about, and also through connectivity, promote economic development on the western end of downtown, sorry, the western end of town. And a new action item in the transportation chapter is ensuring continued funding for transit services in Black Mountain. Currently, both the Black Mountain Trailblazer and Route one-seventy are supported by federal funding from FTA through grants and Asheville Transit's Route one-seventy funding is set to expire in two thousand and thirteen. And Mountain Mobility Trailblazer funding is set to expire in two thousand and fifteen. These are grants, they may go away. Mountain Mobility, we have a little bit of time and the town does contribute about eighteen thousand of match to the Mountain Mobility Trailblazer, but no longer contributes any match to the Route one-seventy. So this may be something that you wanna look at in the future if this funding source is eliminated by the FTA and find, work with Asheville Transit and Mountain Mobility to continue these transit services, especially considering the rapidly aging population in the town, which may be dependent on them. Next slide. Sorry if you can't see that there, I just wanted to highlight some of those priority trails and sidewalks. This is the Flat Creek Greenway here, going up to Montrier. As Julie White mentioned earlier, Riverwalk Phase Two will connect the trail behind Bielow through the railroad trestle and up to the culvert on US seventy near Ola Guacamole's. And that's, in order to do that, we do need that hydrologic study done. Next slide. In terms of infrastructure and community facilities, one of the highest priority action items was the development of the Water Production and Conservation Plan. This was continued from your two thousand and four plan. As you see in the graph there, service area demand for water does exceed groundwater supply and we rely on the City of Asheville to meet this excess demand. And the water plan would help prioritize investments and policies to better balance this demand and supply moving into the future. Another new highest priority action item was the repair and replacement of the town's aging downtown stormwater system. This was recommended in the stormwater master plan and there may be some opportunities coming up during the US seventy resurfacing to do some minor repairs, but in the long term, this is a system that's gonna need to be replaced. And we did a tour of the system that Bob Watts gave us and there's a photo of him there stopping to actually clean out one of the stormwater drains on Montrier Road. And another highest priority action item that was added to this plan was the renovation of the Carver Center and that's a photo there that Casey snapped about two weeks ago of the Carver Center roof under several inches of water. Next slide. There were no highest priority action items in the last two chapters relating to economic development, historic preservation and cultural resources, but downtown development and support of small businesses were popular goals in the plan. There was broad support, for example, for downtown streetscape improvements and parking improvements and small business development is addressed with a strategy to implement certified entrepreneurial community task force strategies to support local businesses and entrepreneurs. Next slide. So how's this plan going to get implemented? Implementation is going to be guided by the action matrix, which is basically chapter nine. It summarizes all the goals, strategies and actions in the plan. Actions is in bold there because that's what you wanna pay attention to. They can be connected to specific responsible parties, priorities and timeframes. And this is going to be used by the Board of Aldermen and town departments, as I mentioned earlier, to prioritize future policies and investments, inform development decisions and also review progress on plan implementation. That will occur on an annual basis and the plan can be amended as needed, including minor amendments, with major amendments occurring every five years during the next update process. And I have one example there below, this is the future land use map action that I mentioned earlier and the responsible party designates the lead entity. If there's more than one, then the first one is considered to be the lead. In terms of priority, there is highest, high and medium. Every effort should be made to implement or further highest priority action items in the next five years. And the timeframe column you see there gives a suggested start date for some actions. They're assigned to not all the action items, but to all the capital projects and other time-dependent actions. This one, for example, is sequential, you need to complete your future land use map before you can identify certain areas for growth or preservation. And short-term roughly means start within one year, medium-term, start within two, long-term are actions that you would start within three to five. And with that, I'm sure you have a lot of questions?
Yeah, I think probably most of the question we've been asked most would probably be, if you would go to chapter two, page seventeen, that is maintenance of owner and renter occupied housing and address exactly what all that means.
I don't have the full plan, but Darlene has the last updated graphic. I think you're gonna need to pull out more specifically.
Periodic inspection has been proposed by the Housing Commission as one strategy to ensure proper maintenance of rental properties. I think, and you mentioned here that recently passed legislation in the General Assembly, I think prohibits some of that.
It does and the Housing Commission did receive some information from Ron Steen, he might, he better qualify to comment on some of that most recent legislation.
Their own minimum housing code was up for, actually I don't know where it is in the process, but the planning board sent to me their proposals to add it into the minimum housing code, which addresses some of what's in the comprehensive plan. And I'll tell you, the comprehensive plan's so big, I haven't read it all yet. But what we did is we're leaving the language in our minimum housing code for rental units so that those inspections are voluntary. However, statutorily, if you have repeated issues of particular property, then you can mandate inspections.
Well, I think here we've always kinda governed it by complaints, haven't we?
We haven't had, I probably haven't had the staff to go around and mandatory, but our prior minimum housing code also said that may have inspections.
And let me just point out something here. The majority of the public comments received on the comprehensive plan are about things that aren't actually actions in the comprehensive plan. And this is sort of one of those things. If you go to the goals, strategies and actions for this chapter, it's rather vague, there's an action that says enhance and enforce the town's minimum housing code. And that's as specific as it gets. If it had been any more specific, I don't think the planning board would have made a motion to bring this to you. And I did make some effort to paint both sides of the picture there, we've heard things from the Housing Commission and the Building Inspector and then we also had a lot of property owners come in and tell us about their concerns. And I think I have a bullet in there addressing that, where they say that they think would reduce the stock of affordable housing. So that's the narrative, that's where it danced all over the third rails, but when you get to the action matrix, that's where they're avoided.
Board have any comments? The board is not gonna take a vote on this. Like you said, it took you sixteen months to do it, we can't digest it in thirty days. But this time I'm open, are you through then, Brian? Okay. I'm open up for anyone that wants to come up and make comments regarding it. Just give us your name and your address and hold your comments to three minutes if you would please. But again, a lot of work and I know this board thanks you for it.
My name is Martha Baldwin, three hundred New Bern Avenue. And once again, it's come to our attention that as part of the comprehensive plan update that additional requirements may be added to our rental properties. I want to give you an overview from a landlord's perspective. My husband and I own rental property in Black Mountain. My husband and I have owned rental property in Black Mountain for over 20 years. We've managed our own property, including advertising, interviewing prospective tenants, and dealing with complaints and repairs. Our procedures include having all tenants fill out a three-page application that allows us to check their credit, as well as review their qualifications for the property in question. We do not operate on, we do not operate on a first-come, first-served basis. Not everyone who shows up to view a property has adequate income to make the monthly rental payments. We have found the Black Mountain market to be competitive with a limited number of available rentals. While there's a wide range of single and multifamily dwellings, we've found the market to be very price-sensitive in terms of renters' income capacity. An increase as of little as $25, excuse me, $15 to $25 can make a difference in whether we attract applicants and find qualified tenants. As an example, we, we and many other homeowners experience a 20% to 30% increase in property insurance that has to be passed on to our tenants. We maintain high-quality, affordable, single-family housing. If a tenant has a concern or a complaint, our tenants notify us by mail or phone, as is appropriate. We follow up with a phone call or a visit to the property. Emergency repairs are handled in 24 to 48 hours, and any others are followed up in a timely manner. Any repairs or major updates are done according to building code with the necessary permits secured. The tenants have a responsibility, as stated in our lease, to keep the property clean, maintain the areas that are their responsibility, and report any problems promptly to the landlord. We found this system to be cost-effective while providing prompt service and high-quality, affordable rentals in the Black Mountain market. The addition of unnecessary, low-value regulations that add more cost can be the tipping point between providing a rental unit at an affordable cost or losing that rental unit to the Black Mountain market when the property is sold. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
I say a smart man always lets the pretty lady come up front. I appreciate Martha's remarks. Before I start my prepared three-minute, I want to thank Mr. Taylor and everyone else on the comprehensive plan. After reading all nine chapters of it, yes, I did, after reading all nine chapters and being an avid cyclist and riding over to Cheshire and going under the bridge where the silt's washed out, and I can appreciate all, and Jamie took my calls on that because that was a concern, I appreciate the quality of place that Mayor Bartlet said a moment ago about all this. And I appreciate everyone taking remarks. So I'll read prepared remarks, which I normally don't do, but I want to get everything in in my three minutes. Mike Baldwin, 300 New Bern Avenue. I know many of you are probably already familiar with how hard it is to find, renovate, and rent properties to tenants with qualified income. I'm here to not speak about potentially negative effects and changes in the comprehensive draft update. What does Black Mountain rental market currently look like? Housing data indicates a very tight supply with a vacancy of approximately 0%. Renter occupied dwellings are only 35% of the housing, a minority of the households. 25% of the homes in Buncombe County are owned as second residences. The high cost of housing relative to income in Black Mountain and Buncombe County is driven by an economy heavily supported by tourism and second residences. Many of the service jobs supported by tourism unfortunately generate low wages, and the median household income in Black Mountain has rose only slightly to less than $37,000. My comments tonight on the plan and the negative changes are on rental properties. Now that the draft comprehensive plan has been released, the particular details that I consider potentially harmful are in Chapter Two. A summary of them is Page 17 mentioning increased rental mandatory inspections, the increased ability of tenants to complain directly, possibly bypassing the tenant relationship, and possible registration of rental units in Black Mountain. The Planning Board and Housing Commission, in my belief, has incorrectly believed that mandatory inspection of rental properties and giving tenants the ability to bypass the landlord and complaints will increase the quality of available rentals at lower costs to potential tenants. This will have exactly the opposite effect. By increasing regulation increases cost on the property, making it harder to operate the rental units. In reducing the affordable housing supplies, many folks may find themselves better off making the economic decision to greatly reduce future rental developments and sell existing properties in their open market. Income necessary to buy a property will, in many cases, greatly exceed what is required to qualify for the current monthly rental rate. Some supporting background, renters have more than adequate recourse currently under North Carolina law and regulation. The current complaint-driven process is balanced with equal responsibilities for the tenant and the landlord. Most landlords, including ourselves, utilize leases to clearly delineate these responsibilities. In my opinion, as a layperson, General Statute 42 covers these inspections and how they are supposed to be done in writing. Additionally, Senate Bill 683 passed two years ago seems to prohibit mandatory rental inspections and the ability of the tenant to complain directly outside the tenant landlord legally binding relationship. Some additional comments, they mentioned a moment ago the minimum housing code, and we all contributed to that a few years ago when it was released. But it seems to censure rental properties at the exclusion of owner-occupied dwellings, which are over 70% of the houses in Black Mountain. In many respects, the minimum housing code as written currently works. However, it was written in 2009, and it's a belief of myself and some other rental property owners, it may no longer be in compliance with the recent legislative changes. So what are the positive actions that Black Mountain can take? The town of Black Mountain and the Planning Board and Housing Commission could act in concert to reduce the regulatory towards rate rentals and maybe even offer some tax incentives and rebates to encourage the development of more rental properties. This would help landlords and existing rental properties reduce costs to meet more affordable market rental rates. Additionally, the town and the boards could increase activity to expand business development that attracts higher-paying jobs. And I know this is going on, I'm not saying it's not, but more is needed, in my opinion. If existing and potential residents need different types of rental housing not provided by the for-profit marketplace, it is up to Black Mountain to encourage that development. This can be through partnerships, grants, or other nonprofit agency means without impacting the property rights or inflicting additional costs on existing homeowners that are operating for-profit rental properties. So in summary, the affordability and availability of rental properties is directly tied to the cost of land, housing costs, demographics, and jobs availability with median incomes are higher. The attraction of Black Mountain recently has been to free, has been for people to either buy second homes or to retire to this town, and they're welcome, definitely welcome. But there's little that can be done to alter this free-market-based activity, which does unfortunately drive up rental housing costs. The last thing we need is costly land and housing, and the last thing we need in a costly land and housing market of Black Mountain is regulations that increase costs for developing and operating rental properties and puts the landlord in an unfavorable position. So it's my belief that this is the time to get this right before the comprehensive plan is released and possibly burdensome ordinances created, implemented, because my understanding, the comprehensive plan is the framework of which ordinances are future written against. And I appreciate your time, and I'm sorry I had to cram all this in so quickly.
Thank you. A lot of good points. I would add that the Roberts Horse Farm property is back, I believe, on the market to be developed, and that someone come back with a development.
Certainly, there's been some questions asked from the development community about that property and the master plan that was approved there, so we're encouraged by that.
The master plan we carry forward, and that would be affordable housing. We're talking mostly condos, it'll be some townhouses. It's a great plan, super. Any other comments? All right, Ryan, you owe me. I bet you hadn't want to speak.
I'm sorry, I was, I wasn't listening. What did you say?
We're listening to you.
Thank you. I am approaching this as somebody who owns a home that's smaller than I can afford. I have a reverse mortgage on it, so I'm not going anywhere for the next 20 or more years. But I've tried to be creative by renting part of it and so on. So I can look at this from a couple of different angles. I'm also a member of the Housing Commission. I've been in every discussion we've had. I believe it's the right of somebody moving into a space to know that it's safe. I have advocated that every tenant turnover, Dan Cordell, do an inspection. He will find things like electrical extension, electrical extensions, new circuits drilled through spaces and not fire stopped. He'll find all kinds of problems caused just by tenants doing tenant upfit and so on. This should be caught every time a place is released. And his inspection costs less than the cost of doing a credit check on a prospective tenant. It will not increase the cost of renting the space, except it will require a landlord to make sure that the space is safe for the inhabitants. And that's the purposes of building codes, is for the public health and safety. We can't ignore that fact. There are unsafe places to live in this town, and they need more frequent inspection. That's been the stand I've taken at meetings of the Housing Commission, and I'll stand behind it.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on. The Board will review this, and it'll also be on next month's agenda. Yeah, communication from the town attorney?
No, sir.
Town manager?
Just two quick things. First of all, I wanted to let everybody know that we have advertised for the Planning Director position. Applications are due back by November 12th. We'll accept them after that date. That's the, that's the date that review starts, so I will keep you informed as that process moves forward. And then I just want to briefly give a thanks to Brian Taylor and Deanna Stone and to Jamie Matthews for the, for the work they do. Not only do they work very hard, but one of the things that I'm most proud of is I get letters periodically and emails from people commending me for their level of customer service. And I'm as proud of that as I am of the immense amount of work they have accomplished is also the way in which they have accomplished it. So I just wanted to say that briefly. Thank you, that's all I had.
Any members of the Board have anything?
Yes, I'd like to comment. I promise not to keep you too long. Last week, a week ago, I went with the mayor and our town manager to Hickory, to the North Carolina League of Municipalities Conference. And the one reason I wanted to go was in Hickory, it was right in our back door, and I thought, well, that won't cost the town very much money, let's do that. So anyway, I went, and we went for the day, attended four sessions. We were actually there from nine to five. And a couple of highlights, the opening session was given by some leaders of the newly-formed North Carolina Communities and Business Alliance. And they challenged all of us to think big, but by thinking big, and they're talking about economically for the, for your municipalities, but don't forget about your basic services, your infrastructure, don't lose sight of your foundation. And the focus, of course, was working together, the communities and, and the businesses working together. Then I went to a session, we all went to this one, working cooperatively with the legislative delegation. Well, you know, one of the hot items was the issue with Asheville and their water situation. And one of the guys that spoke was the lobbyist, Jack Kozart, for Asheville. And he especially wanted to point out, remember when we sent a letter supporting Asheville's stand in their water situation? And he said they received 60 letters from different communities and how much that that meant, and he felt like it was a wonderful effect. And one of the things he said is keep communication. Even when times are, even when things are quiet, keep communication with your legislative representatives. Then I decided I was going to the council manager session, the form of government, which we are under, past, present, and future. And the present council manager that we're under is 100 years old in this country. And Hickory and Morganton, when did we start on our council manager? Do you remember? Did anybody remember?
About 1986.
1986? Okay. I wasn't sure when we started it. But it sounds like the way to go. It's the most popular form of government. And one of the things, now think about this, one of the things they talked about, some of the towns are still on the council being elected all at one time. You know, we're on staggered sessions. Just think, if we were all running right now, wouldn't this be, nobody could focus, I don't think. But anyway, I thought it was, I had that thought, thought I'd share that with you. And then we heard from the newly-appointed Secretary of Transportation, retired general, surely he can handle the Department of Transportation. And he was talking about, he wanted more uniformity in decision-making with transportation. And he gave a formula. Of course, my ears perked up, you know, I have, how I am about formulas. And he said 70% of it was driven by data and 30% by ranking. So we'll see how that goes. Let's see how uniform it turns out to be. What I'm pointing to is, I came away from there, I'm so glad I went. I came away really inspired and so thankful to be part of this operation here and this teamwork. I actually came back, I'd already, I'd already read two chapters of the comprehensive plan, and I actually, well, I can't say that I read it really word-for-word finishing it up, but I've kind of speed-read through it. And of course, I, I think the matrix at the end of it is a really good thing for us to use. That's going to be a good tool. And the comprehensive plan pretty much puts the focus on it. What a wonderful place we have. And my thanks go to every part of this. When we talk about, and I'll go back to what Jamie Matthews was talking about, this is a teamwork effort, and I'm very proud to be a part of this. So I just wanted you to know, we, we actually did go to the meetings, and it was very beneficial. And I challenged the rest of my peers to take advantage of these conferences, especially when they're close by. And if, if our manager will let some of his staff go, they can actually, they had a lot of things there for them, too, I noticed. But anyway, it's a great thing, and I was glad I had a chance to go.
Any other comments? Somebody may disagree with you, Maggie, on everybody leaving at the same time. You know, there's no mountain problem that politicians and babies have something in common. They both should be changed regularly and both for the same reason. But seriously, you know, changes are coming, you know, and we're going to have to be more and more flexible. Why, there's another blessed out of flexible, for they shall not be bent out of shape. So, you know, we need to be open-minded on the things that lay in front of us. Boy Scouts, I hope this was more interesting to you than paint drying on the wall.
Yeah.
I'm sure it was, but none of you fell asleep, and all of you looked like you were listening. So I commend you on that, because every now and then, some of our adults here fall asleep listening to us. But thank you for coming, you really added to our program tonight. We look forward to you coming back and being representative as Eagle Scouts. If you do that, we'll certainly recognize you here in the program. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion that we go into closed session.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye.